Our ongoing systematic approach at Beach Road School to safety and security. We conduct regular drills, we check our alarm system, and we make sure all those things are in place and continue to be at the highest integrity for the safety and security of our studios. We'll be discussing a little bit of safety at our faculty meeting tomorrow. We are also looking for ways in terms of how and the right way to elicit parent thoughts and feedback, which was on parents' minds at some point in the future, so we'll be thinking about the right mechanism and the right way to go about doing that. That's been on our minds, we've been discussing that since the very terrible event that took place. Obviously, we remain vigilant in our efforts to keep our children, visitors, and staff safe to the best of our ability. It's a pleasure to welcome to our board meeting tonight Cheryl Mammon. Cheryl, want to stand up? As you know, Cheryl was unanimously approved by the board to be our next special services director at a meeting last week. Cheryl will start her work effective March 12th, but Cheryl has already started work. She was here on site this past Thursday all day. She started her transition here with a welcome breakfast, a meeting with the special services staff, and some transition time with Claire Kennedy. Many thanks to our selection committee members who spent many hours interviewing a tremendous, diverse, and talented group of candidates. So Cheryl, welcome. And just as a reminder, Claire has agreed to stay on an unlimited number of days per week through March 12th when Cheryl starts. So welcome and enjoy the meeting. Just to bring you up to date on our FY '19 budget, as you know, I presented on January 23rd the operating budget at Town Hall to the joint boards. Previous to that presentation, you might remember, in November, I presented our capital budget as well. This past Tuesday, the Board of Selectmen reviewed all town budgets at a meeting at 5:00 at Town Hall. They did not make any reductions to our operating budget, but they did reduce our capital budget request. They've deferred the north parking lot paving project to FY 2020. They did eliminate the site work portion of the budget in hopes that the Department of Public Works could assist us in this project. And as you might remember, we've already eliminated our capital request for kitchen equipment. This will be funded out of our cafeteria budget. So the only remaining item in our capital budget moving forward at this point is our technology infrastructure equipment request, and that's what stands at this point. The next part of the process for the town is a Board of Finance review of all town department budgets, including ours, on Wednesday, March 7th at 6:00 in the Town Hall meeting. Our sexual abuse and prevention mandated instruction has now been completed for all of our Beach Road students. We thank Project Teach for doing this in a very thoughtful, developmentally appropriate way with their language and instruction that was appropriate certainly to the age of each of our children in each grade. Once again, upon reflection, I'd like to say that while there was no intent, we sincerely apologize for missing the obvious in the letter's content when it was sent out via hard copy. I'd also like to say that we also received many favorable comments from parents as well as staff in terms of the importance and timeliness of these lessons. So thank you from Project Teach for doing that. An update on the S-Wing work that has been going on since December 30th. Significant work in progress has been made since we met last month. With the exception of Mrs. Escheverry and Mr. McHugh's classes, all classes and programs are back to their regular roads. The two rooms that I mentioned, the two teachers who are still displaced, walls, floors, and ceiling work is now completed. We are now moving furniture back in, and hopefully in the next few days, within a week or so, students will be following soon back to their regular classrooms. Again, many thanks to the students, staff, and parents for their patience and flexibility during this time. Kindergarten orientation is coming up, believe it or not, and we're making a few modifications this year. This was shared in Mrs. Prisco's message in one of her principal updates. We're adding a component to our kindergarten orientation this year to include a visit by the children. Parents will be provided the same detailed overview of kindergarten that they've had in the past. At the same time, their children will be able to visit a kindergarten classroom with one of our kindergarten teachers. Children will have an opportunity to hear a story, complete a craft or activity, and spend some time participating in free exploration of a kindergarten classroom with one of our We had a great jump rope for heart activity on February 13th. Mrs. Prisco will give us a little more information about that during her principal's update, but it was a super event. We had lots of parents, lots of kids, and lots of activity, and a few calories were lost by all. Our town ad hoc building committee has now had two meetings. This is an ad hoc committee that was formed at the request of Beth Heller, our first selectman, and it's comprised of Jeff Kaufman, Andy Esposito, and John Volte, with ex-officio members Sheila McCrevan, Al Pulo, and myself. The committee has met twice, and we've reviewed the December 30th incident in relation to the building upgrade and the installations in the building, and we are continuing to meet. We'll have a next meeting in a couple of weeks from now. We had a great collaboration between our library and our school and the town library. Mrs. Prisco will talk a little more about that in part of her update, but it's something worth hearing about and mentioning, and we're glad to see that collaboration continue. Speaking of library and reading, save the date. This Thursday is our annual Read Across America program. It'll be held from 8:45 till 10:00 in the morning. Board members, if you are still planning on reading, and I hope you are, please let Marcia know by this evening or tomorrow morning at the latest. We are looking forward to having a number of our community members as well as members of the Boards of Selectmen and Finance on hand for this annual celebration of reading. And hold the date for all of our board members. You might remember this from last year and even the year before that, the BOA superintendents continue to look for new ways to collaborate together between our four districts. And as it has been past several years' practice, we'll be inviting all board members and administrators from all four districts to join together on April 6th for a dinner and then the high school play, which is the Addams Family. Most of you probably already received your formal invitation, so I would ask that you would please let Marcia know. Amity has asked us, and then they're hosting this, Amity has asked us that the deadline is this Friday, so we need to know your intentions by this Friday, so please let Marcia know that. We've spoken about our ad hoc class size committee, and it's now time to start putting some motion into that. So board members, we have allocated three board members to be part of that committee, and so if you're interested in serving on that, please let us know. We are looking to move forward on that in the next, in the coming weeks. And finally, snow make-up days. So today, to date, we've incurred four snow days, as you probably know, four days to be made up. So at this point in time, the last student day is currently Thursday, June 14th. You can certainly see the updated calendar on the website, which will show you the days that have been added to the calendar. Spring is only a few days away, so we hope that it arrives quick. And that ends my report.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Bob? Need the items? Okay. Are we doing Mrs. Prisco now or something else?
They can go.
We'll go ahead and have, we'll go ahead and do presentations, and I'd like to just end up by saying we very appreciate Peter and Grace and Joe for coming tonight to present on Responsive Classroom. And we have, we really have two parts to our presentation tonight. The Responsive Classroom presentation that was very well received at our curriculum meeting a few months ago, and also the second component of that is our school climate plan, which Mrs. Sherman will present as well. And I see these as an integrated thing together, so what I'd like board members to be listening for is all the information on both of these presentations as they integrate together and complement each other before maybe questions are asked, because one might be answered in one presentation than another. So that being said, Peter, I think you're leading the charge, and we're all on the same page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we really appreciate the chance to talk to the board about Responsive Classroom. We'll talk to anybody about Responsive Classroom anywhere, anytime, but we particularly enjoy meeting with the board and making sure we're all on the same page. When we met with the curriculum committee, we spent a lot of time in the discussion talking about what Responsive Classroom is. So for this presentation, we, Margaret's nodding her head, so we found a couple of sentences that really describe what Responsive Classroom is. And I'd just emphasize a couple of things. Evidence-based approach to education, and the key is the relationship between academic success and social-emotional life. So those are the key points. And I understand you all have copies of the presentations.
Yes.
So what we're going to do is take you through a quick overview of Responsive Classroom, what it is in a little bit more detail, but not tremendous detail, and then go through a timeline of history of Responsive Classroom in the future, and give you some statistics, and then outline what we all believe are the next steps to Responsive Classroom.
So with Responsive Classroom, the core belief is that kids, students, need a set of social and emotional skills to become successful in life. Just think about all the skills you need to be successful at this meeting. We have to make sure that our students are taught those skills, social and emotional skills in school. And the guiding principles underneath help guide the teachers on how to get the job done.
So Responsive Classroom has four key domains that help to support positive student outcomes. The first is engaging academics. The second is creating a positive community. There it is. The responsive teaching and finally, the effective teaching.
And the key point with those is all four are...
Can I stop? Sorry. She's having a hard time hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for the recording, so if you could just speak up just a little bit. Thank you.
Another key point about the four domains is the relationship between them. You can't function very well without all four. So the history of Responsive Classroom feature is that in 2001, there was a committee appointed to select a called Character Education Program or a Character Education Curriculum. I was not part of that, but Grace was. And in 2003, the committee recommended that the Responsive Classroom approach be about. In 2003, the first teachers were trained in Responsive Classroom. Grace and I were married and spent our honeymoon around Responsive Classroom training.
And I do not want to go. To our honeymoon, yes, but I do not want to go to this training. I love it.
In 2006, 2007, I was trained as consulting teachers, then certified to present Responsive Classroom workshops and training at Beach Road School and elsewhere. Beginning in 2007 and '08, we began training teacher staff, and they continued at the last institute in the summer of 2016. And then the final step here is Dr. Stella was very clear about trying to establish a transition, so when we weren't around, someone would be able to move in and pick up Responsive Classroom. And so Joe DePalma has now been certified as a Responsive Classroom teacher and selected to become a Responsive Classroom Consulting Teacher in 2018. That's a great step forward. Here's some quick statistics. You can see, we've trained over 130 staff here, and on the current staff, there are 65 teachers and 19 teaching assistants who've been trained in the basic level of Responsive Classroom work. And on the current staff, there are 18 teachers and 10 teaching assistants who have not yet been trained.
And as we look to the future, some priorities include continuing to complete training of all the staff here at Beach Road School, to offer the advanced course of training, which is RCAC, to coach individual staff, focus on fidelity across all classrooms for Responsive Classroom practices, and then offer consistent professional development opportunities.
And on that final point...
So what I'd like to say is that every few years, the district has sponsored a training, and we're due to do that this summer, and we have plans already in place for August, an August training session. We're looking at that being actually two parts, right? Two different segments, depending upon whether it's basic training or people who've been trained before.
Basic training, I like that.
Basic training. Is that the right word? You're in the Army now. So we're looking at offering that again this year. We did not offer it last summer at its time. And there's statistics that were shown on a slide or two before that. Many of those people who have not been trained are just people who have gotten on staff in the last couple of years and have just not had an opportunity to be trained yet either. So we're looking forward to that this coming summer. Also, I'd just say that before we move over to Lisa and have part two of our social-emotional programming and curriculum, I do want to thank Peter and Grace and Joe, because they are very highly trained individuals in this area, and not every district has the opportunity to have people who have mastered the craft and serve as great resources. The kind of training that they'll do this summer is going to come to us, as it has in past summers, at a greatly reduced cost than if we brought trainers in from another place. And it's always nice to have people who can make the connection and can follow through with you and don't just pull up stakes and leave, and you never see them again. So that's definitely a very much a benefit to them being here and a welcome, a welcome part of that. So I'm going to...
Steve just has one question. He can't wait. Oh, two!
I have two little ones. My first question is, what's our annual expenditure for Responsive Classroom?
So we don't have an annual, there's not like a, there's not like a membership fee to get paid or that kind of a thing? So the kind of, so the kind of money that we have invested in this would be in the form of, okay, every two or three years when we do a summer institute, we are looking at an expenditure of around $3,000 for the committed time, the trainers, the space, the food, the so and so forth. So there is that. We have a committed of around $1,500 per year of coaching, of coaching one-on-one that's provided, and that can vary from year to year. There was an expenditure at the very beginning of this particular program when the trainer of trainer training took place, when Grace and Peter were trained, but that was 12 years ago. So there is no membership fee, so to speak.
No, I wasn't. I was just thinking, what's our annual ongoing? What are we investing in this?
So I would say, when you take a look at that, and we were sort of doing the math today, when you take a look at the, over the 12-year period of the every-two-or-three-years seminar thing, it probably equals out to be about $1,000 a year if you play $12,000 of training out over the 12 years we've been talking about this, and then roughly about another $1,500, give or take, of coaching that goes on each year. So maybe roughly $2,500 per year has been the allocation over the long haul.
Then my second follow-up is, how do we know this is the right program for our school? You know, when I look at everything else, we have looked at curriculum like three times in the same timeframe that we have just made a decision in 2003, 15 years ago, to go with RC, and we've never really looked at what else is out there and are there other programs that have better outcomes? And what outcomes do we measure to know that this works for us? Because for math, we've gone through two iterations of math programs since I've been on the board. We've looked at our science, we've looked at so many different things on a regular basis, but I haven't heard us actually investigate kind of RC compared to what other programs exist.
Well, part of it is Responsive Classroom isn't a program. It's an approach. It's a way to get the, to get your academics done and your social-emotional skills. So there isn't really a lot out there that, what else would you compare? There aren't much, there's not a character education program, because that's not, this is a lot, there's a lot of that out there, but this is not that.
There are also a number of programs that work on just emotional issues, just emotional support. Responsive Classroom really is the only one that focuses as much on the academic side as it does on the social and emotional side. The other thing is, as Grace said, it's not a program, so once people have been trained and hopefully update their training over time, you know, it just keeps building upon itself. So that's, yeah, so I would get, in terms of the, how do we know it's working? As I said, the Responsive Classroom has had a lot of research into how it works, how it succeeds, and I actually brought copies of kind of a summary of that, which I can give you, and I think people would agree those same things we've indicated here.
I would encourage you to actually pass those out, Peter, if you did bring copies of that if you want to. And I just would, I would throw in that, so Responsive Classroom is definitely a, an approach, a philosophical way of looking at this from a social-emotional curriculum that is in, you know, the State Department. This is something that the State Department, from a school climate standpoint, Joanne Freyberg, who leads that department, would endorse and would say, you know, a very, very key way of doing business in a successful way. I think, you know, there are certainly other approaches, such as Character Council, others. I think what sets this one apart is it doesn't just look at, let's just focus on the behavior. It focuses on really the whole child and the whole, and the whole, the whole culture of the school. So it's not just meant just for behaviors, but it's looking at how it impacts academics and how it impacts that little, that slide that we just saw a few moments ago that Joe had described. It's more of an all-encompassing approach versus just a single-focused approach.
So for instance, in the school climate work, it was done, however many years it was done, it was all based on the theories of Responsive Classroom. And so that's now part of the way we do a lot of things here. So it's really...
One of the things that was mentioned at the curriculum meeting was, you know, how Columbia is considered kind of self-updating in a way, that the curriculum is updated constantly by the interface that we have of Columbia and their recommendations on changes, which we accept or not. And my understanding a little bit was the same thing with Responsive Classroom. You know, the information that you get back from Responsive Classroom is a little bit of a self-updating curriculum, to the degree that it's not a curriculum and it's not a program, but a similar kind of situation as the Columbia kind of, you know, feedback and the continuing involvement with Columbia and with the Responsive Classroom organization provides, again, updates over time. So it's not the same as math that, you know, at least that was what I understood. You know, it's a different, I don't know, difference, okay. Okay, you got it, Steve?
I can just add, so workshop is, so when you think about Columbia, you think about workshop, the workshop structure, the workshop model. So Responsive Classroom is a structure, and it's a model in which there, you see a lot, you should see a lot of commonalities across classrooms. And then you have to adapt to what your children need at that time, but you stay within that structure, just like for reading workshop, writing workshop, and math workshop, you stay within that structure. So I don't know if that helps.
Okay. Did anybody, oh, go ahead, Nancy.
You know, this sounds great, and I feel like with my own children, anecdotally, it seems like some of the words are within the course of Responsive Classroom methodology do come out, and the perseverance, and also that's quite aligned with the mission and vision in terms of a lot of similarities. I kind of pause on the guiding principle number five. I wasn't sure if you could expound a bit more on that, which is what we know and believe about our students individually, culturally, developmentally, informs our expectations, reactions, and attitudes about those students. There's a lot loaded in that, and I'm just wondering how we go about doing that, because that's, that's a whole nother realm that I don't, the other ones are sort of, okay, these are, you know, quite, quite clear, I guess, but that one's tricky, in my mind.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, the previous one, I believe, is knowing your students.
No, that's the one that's about knowing your students.
Well, and actually, that's what I think combined.
They're combined. It used to be seven, this is our first time presenting, it was six.
But knowing your kids and knowing their families is really crucial to be able to teach them as well as you possibly can.
And so you're, we're training teachers to...
To take time to know your students.
And to know the family.
And to, to, as in some of us do home visits.
Oh.
You know, just really getting like, I could, my students, I know who, like, their pets' names, that, you know, their, all their, you know, siblings, I know if they are living separately from their parents. I mean, I...
Is that K through six?
I mean, I can't speak for every teacher, but like, I can't imagine going into a classroom and not knowing my students. Like, I know their lives. I know their hopes, their dreams, their fears, and that, that's just talking about these, you can't connect with your students if you don't know your students. I mean, if you don't take the time to get to know them, and they don't, you don't give them the time to get to know each other, then they're not going to take care of each other and spend a lot of time, more time on this.
I thought there might be something very distinct about these are the three things, but I understand, okay.
Just know your kids. That's what it, in a nutshell.
Thank you. Lynn.
So is it our intention...
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy, where are you going?
No, I just said, thank you.
Oh, hello.
Is it our intention in the August training, Bob, to train the teachers that are currently not trained?
Our goal is to train everybody who has not been trained. And so to the greatest extent possible, with the greatest passion and fervor of trying to do that, we certainly have a number of people, like I said, who over the last two to three years, since the last training was held, have been hired. So we have a number of teachers, a number of teacher assistants who fall into that category, who've never had the opportunity. And for those who haven't in the past, not taken advantage of the training, and it happens during the summer, so it's one of those kind of things where it happens at a time when people are on their own, we're going to be doing everything we can to have those people attend as well. We do do periodic updates during the course of the year, so for instance, we have a, we have a busy session coming up, I don't remember when it is.
On the...
Soon.
March 20th.
It's the March 20th, where we will, all staff members in the, everybody will, there'll be a level of Responsive Classroom retraining, conversations, highlighting certain parts of that that will take place for everybody.
And the August training, is that number of people who aren't currently trained, the cap of the number of people you could take to train?
No. No. The, Grace and I go through advertised, or advertising, so we go out around the country and give them, the typical class size, 30, so they're 30 participants in a group. So we're hoping to do two sections, RCC, the basic course, and RCA, so that will be, could be up to 60 people. And in our, in the trainings that we've done recently, past three or four years, we've included incoming interns and in some cases outgoing interns. And that's been tremendous, because a lot of them have been getting hired. So they come to us already trained before they even were hired in the process. And those who are trained while, before they're interns are just so much more valuable as part of the program, because they've been trained.
Great. I've mentioned the RCAC course, that's for people who have already been trained in RCC, so.
Already been trained. Many people might sign up.
Right.
So my question to you, Bob, is would we consider if there were slots open, opening up to other BOA schools to invite them to participate in that as a shared service?
Certainly a possibility. We haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet, but that's certainly a possibility to help, it could help from an economic, shared service, you know, standpoint from that, and also build the bridges.
Build the bridge.
We're trying to do.
Right.
Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
Did anybody have anything else before Lisa? I know we weren't supposed to ask questions, so I don't know. He never behaves. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
The next part of this is a one-page in your board packet on your screen, and it's, says Woodbridge List, which are in the top, Report to Curriculum Committee, February 8th, provides some information that Lisa will share.
Hello, everybody. So you have the one-page sheet in front of you, so I'm not going to read everything off of that, I'm just going to give you some broad stroke highlights. Just background information, the Safe School Climate Committee is a very active committee. We meet regularly. We have administrators, classroom teachers, school psychologists, special area teachers, all serving on this committee. As I said, we meet monthly. We regularly reflect on our Safe School Climate Action Plan and make changes as needed. And then a lot of times, smaller subgroups will peel off and work on some ongoing projects, such as the CARES assemblies. Most recently, the Safe School Climate Committee has brought forth CARES assemblies. The CARES acronym stands for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. And last year, we started with our first whole-school CARES assembly, and then we had two more after that, where we broke the school up in half and got the whole community together. That came right directly out of the Safe School Climate Committee. And then we also initiated Be Kind this week, which is now an annual event. So the Safe School Climate Committee has been around long enough and has been doing work long enough that there's actually some components of the plan that are now just considered best practice, that just sort of continue on with our daily Beach Road School, how we sort of live life here. So some of that includes our family resource team, our student council, AWOPA. So some of that includes our Family Resource Team, our Student Council, AWOPO, our Behavior Resource Team, our pre-K parent training, and DECA training for community preschools. So now, that is not even on our Safe School Climate Plan, that's just sort of how we do business here at Beecher. Actionable items on our Safe School Climate Plan right now, we kind of recently divvied them up into like different buckets. So one bucket is community spirit, and that is continuing on with the CARES Assembly. This year, we're also going to implement a whole-school field day. So I'm so excited about that. I'm so excited about that. We're going to try that this year in the spring, I know, I'm super excited about that. And our amazing PE and health department, I mean, we kind of pitched that idea, sent them, they jumped on board right away, and they're like, this is great, and they're very excited, so it's awesome. We also are continuing with some anti-bullying initiatives. In the past, we've had Anti-Defamation League come in and do some work with some of our students. This year, we're going to continue on with our Be Kindness Week. We have some targeted anti-bullying lessons that happen in art through literature and health activities. And our Be Kindness Week, if you recall, there is like a nice homeschool connection where we get parents to sort of send in acts of kindness that are happening at home, and we do a number of events sort of throughout the week of Be Kindness, which is coming up in, the third week of March is when we're going to do it this year. And then responsive classroom is another one of our actionable items, which is why I'm here after our lovely RC folks. And you heard about the upcoming training coming up, about the IMPEDD PD that we sort of do all year long through coaching and through some faculty meeting and professional development time. And then finally, our school climate survey is the last sort of actionable item on our school climate plan, and that is going to be completed, we do that every two years, every two years, so we're up again this spring. And we review that, once we get those results, we review that, and we look for anything else that we need to add or change or do differently within our Safe School Climate Committee. And Project Teach, it's not actually currently on our Safe School Climate Plan, but now that that is a new statewide curriculum, we are going to be adding that sort of on to our plan moving forward. Broad strokes, any questions?
Any questions for Lisa?
Did you say we are having the ADL coming this year, or are you just?
No, I mentioned that we had that in the past. We did not move forward with that this year. I mean, that might change in the future, but we did that last year, right, it was last year? Two years ago?
I think it was two years.
Yikes. Two years ago we did that?
Time flies.
Time flies when you're having fun at the church.
That's part, I think that's part of a menu of things that we continue to want to circle back and reintroduce to kids over the few years.
Yeah, I think that we waited because it was with our fifth and sixth graders at the time, and so we were waiting until, you know, the new kid. That's one of the conversations I know that we were having around that, so.
I think Steve has a question.
No, my comment would be, I think that that's not something we should do intermittently. I think it should be a regular program that we implement.
More regularly.
Thank you. Okay, anything else for Lisa? Thank you.
So I'm going to, what did you say, Margaret? I have a couple more slides to show here, so.
It's up here.
So on the video, okay. So we had a fairly all-inclusive, all-encompassing report back in the spring on summer programs. This is just, again, to bring you up to date as to, as we're getting ready to launch for this, for this coming, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Getting ready to launch for the summer, we've been spending some time, the point people for these programs and administration have met, just to, just to bring you up to date, we have established our programs and dates, and we will be, and you'll see in another slide, but we will be communicating out to all parents of the school about all the programs, all the dates, how to click on a link or where to go to sign up, so it's one-stop shopping, so to speak. But these are the program dates that are, have been established, the same programs we've had for the last so years. Again, the highlights really are that, again, one of the benefits and really one of the strong points is that our programs are staffed by people who our kids know, current staff or former Beecher Road students themselves, people who they see in extended day, have this sense of familiarity and family. We have an enriching and fun and safe place to go for the summer. We are proposing, and I'm going to be asking you tonight to be making the motion to approve a cost increase of six percent. This is the first increase in more than eight years. Why do we need to do an increase? Well, that's a long time ago, that increase, so that means the people of this program have not had an increase in an hourly wage change for eight years, number one. Number two is, we also made a commitment through our budgeting process, as she or you know, to have a cost-year aspect to the summer program, so a part of that six percent goes to cover wage increase, and then the other part is to cover the increased security measures as part of our budgeting process. We have the SRO on staff for all programs. We also have certified nurse on staff for all programs, and we're looking to combine resources for our nursing between our programs and the recreation program. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to, after tonight, hopefully after tonight, we will be able to e-blast the parents in the coming days or week or so, full information on all these programs, so they have one-stop shopping. Just again, as a reminder, extended day for the summer, provides that early morning time, eight to nine o'clock, or the afternoon, from one, from twelve to five-thirty. It provides students opportunities to do different activities. It also provides an opportunity for student volunteers at the high school level to earn community service hours. Summer enrichment program likewise, a lot of offerings, a lot of excitement around a lot of specialized areas, and again, an opportunity for some of our former students to volunteer and earn community service as well, just as a couple of highlights. Our additional programs are the Summer Scholars for Math and Language Arts, which is by invitation, and Special Education, which is, which is compelled by the PBT process and the needs mandatory for an individual student, and of course, the Woodbridge Recreation Program, which shares the facility with us during the course of the summer. So I don't think we have any questions about that, but we'd be glad to answer those, and certainly would like to ask you to consider the motion tonight for the increase, so we can move forward and be able to put all this out there for parents.
Okay, I think we asked her a question.
Sure.
Another question, but I appreciate the cost increase for the wage, and I feel like that should be something that's looked at, at least at the bare minimum cost of living, because especially if they, because they are program staff during the year, I consider it an additional workload, they're not getting some of the rest that other teachers, so therefore, that cost of living adjustment at the bare minimum should be incorporated every year into the budget. So I fully endorse this increase, and I feel like it's even less than, you know, compensating for the years that they haven't received. But I understand the budget constraints may leave us at the six percent mark.
So thanks for those comments, because we agree that we should be waiting another eight years to do this again, and so we will not wait another eight years to do that. I also think that we wanted to make the, and I think as you can see, we're trying to make this, this first jump manageable. So for someone who's, has their child enrolled in one week of summer enrichment, it'll be less than ten dollars more per week this year than the last year, so we feel that it was a reasonable amount, but we do need to, you're right, we do need to make this on an incremental basis and not wait for a long period of time. I move that we authorize six percent increase in fees for the summer enrichment program in extended day progress.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now is it Gina's turn?
I think so. Mark, are you a member on the, yes. Okay. Give me a minute, one, and I'll elaborate on a few of the things that Bob mentioned. One is our Jump Rope for Heart. I think it was our fourteenth annual year participating, but is our second, second whole-school participation and first evening event. So it really was well-attended, I have, have to thank Mr. Lavoy, Mr. Taddy, Ms. Buzzard, and parent volunteer Smith Maury, as well as Mr. Taddy's student teacher Nicole. They all helped to make it a very successful event. We had lots and lots of families. I will say that there were teams jumping, but the speed jumping, so Mr. Gilbert was sitting next to me judging, he did really well in kindergarten first, second, and third grade, but by around fourth, fifth, and sixth, when they were really speedy, he's like, I might need some help. But, so it was a great event, so we hope certainly to expand upon that for next year. Our library partnership with the town library, so on, and forgive me, I'm going to look at dates, February 15th, there was, it hosted Tween Celebrate the Lunar New Year for grade five and six students, and as well as Graphic Novel Club, Baby Mouse Goes for the Gold. And then for students in grade three and four, that event was held February 26th from 5:30 to 6:30, but this partnership just keeps growing and growing, so we thank our team here and the folks that they work with over at the library. If you have a kindergarten student or a first-grade student, February 6th was a huge day for you, that was the hundredth day of school. So it has become an annual event, too, head into the North Gym for 100 exercises with Mr. Taddy with our first grade, as well as lots of math problems, all within 100. So I took some great photos of some uncoordinated administrators trying to do exactly what the children were doing, but, so we thank the teachers, we thank the students, and of course, Mr. Taddy for helping us bring that together. Read Across America, we are celebrating a week of reading this week, you may have walked by our, there's elaborate sign-out in front of the calf. So as Mr. Gilbert said, if you have not signed on, then you can join us as a guest at the end of the week, we appreciate it. But we've tried to make it a week-long, so there are some suggestions that have been put out to staff for what they can do for each day. Today was to select one of the tumble books for a read aloud with their class. The House Gecko in Ms. Sherman's office read Lizards Wear Lipstick, I think.
Yep.
So we always share that out just for the children to see that even Lizzie Gecko is reading. Tomorrow, kind of somewhere different, mix it up, read with a partner, somewhere that you don't, or read with a different partner, or another grade, or a different space. Wednesday is Non-Fiction Day, a non-fiction picture book. And the library is offered, if you press for time, they've got lots and lots to celebrate, either Black History Month in February or Women in History in March, so if you, as a teacher, can't gather up lots and lots of books for your children to have a big selection, the library staff has done that for you. Thursday will be our special day with the guest readers. And then Friday, this is something new, Post-it Day. Write your favorite book or character on a Post-it, you know we use Post-its a lot, and put it on the giant displays that are out in front of the calf. So just something to kind of make it a week-long rather than a day-long event. So we thank our media staff for always providing all of this support and helping us to continue to celebrate diversity. We have had many In Class celebrations, Chinese New Year, Year of the Dog, Black History Month, the Lunar New Year. We also, bless you, have had some guests. We thank the parent Luke Liu for bringing the young Tajin Masters to multi-age. There was a series of mini workshops, and then they had a performance in the North Gym that I was able to attend, we were even left with a painting, and the meme is "Virtue Has No Borders," so we will look to frame that. Our library media staff provided, you know, resources for our teachers about African-American trailblazers, civil rights movement. You can see some of the books around that are always on display, and that display continues to change, so again, we thank them for that. Also, even in our fourth grade, there was a multicultural celebration and opportunities for learning that was shared with parents. Kindergarten registration, kindergarten orientation, brand-new set of Beecher children coming aboard. So we, our mailing is ready to be sent out, it should be headed out to families over the next few days, but if you know of any kindergarten families who are new to Woodbridge, who may not have a sibling or someone here, let them know they can go online to our website and look for kindergarten registration, or even come in to pick up a packet if they still prefer to do that hard copy. Student Council is alive and well. Just a little information, they, they do a lot for the school, and there's a lot of hard work behind that, but there's a little bit of fun, too. And so I think this will be our third trip to it, to Jordan's. So coming up this week, the student council and their advisors will be having a little bit of fun, a little bit of team-building and bonding down at Jordan's Furniture as part of our third event. I will be there as well, can't guarantee that I'm going up high, but the children all do. So I thank the student council advisors for supporting that, and the parents who bring the children along. Just again, a little bit of bonding, they do a lot of hard work, it's kind of just something fun, but helps to bring them together as a group. Any questions for me?
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so let's, quick update? We met before.
Yeah, quickly, we met this evening, and the largest issue we discussed was obviously the continuing repairs on the pipers, thank you for the update, Bob, as well as looking forward to the facility's assessment, which will be commencing March 12th. And also had a look at the capital budget update and how it will affect various projects around the grounds moving forward. And that was really.
Okay. Finance, was there anything else you wanted to say?
Nope.
Okay. Curriculum, Rick? I know we have a minute.
Well, we had a great presentation.
Yes.
Tonight, and that was basically our presentation at the February 8th Curriculum Committee meeting. We will not have a March Curriculum Committee meeting, but in April, we'll be looking at TAG again for part two of the update on TAG, and I believe that's April 12th. April 12th.
Thank you. And policies?
Yes, we have a for you, three revised policies. One on attendance, 5113, another on truancy, 5113.2, and lastly, 5144.1, restraint, seclusion as submitted. We encourage the board to review it for a sitting period of 30 days, but don't know if anyone has any direct comments at this time. Thank you to Marcia for helping to incorporate all of our edits.
I have a comment.
Yes.
So where do we, do you guys come up with this policy?
No, this policy exists.
Is what we have?
Exists, and we revise it to update it. Policy for K is to revise and review policies.
Page 5113B.
5113B, which is the policy regarding attendance excuses.
Section B, after the 10th absence, so you have 10 absences, and then you're running a fever, that doesn't cause an excused absence based on the way this policy is written?
It must be verified by a medical professional.
But you don't always send someone to the doctor for a fever? If you strictly read the way it's written, that would not count.
And I understand the question, Paul, and I certainly understand the, behind that, what's behind that. This is state or plate language that cave, it's not, it's not even just cave, it's what?
Yeah, because people probably don't read it.
Right.
You know, I'm used to reading every line.
With state legislation in terms of attendance and in terms of, and part of this was also, obviously, the chronic absenteeism that was behind all of this when it was revised, but this is the practice that all districts actually have to adhere to in terms of those particular It's literally lifted right from.
I understand, that doesn't make it right, because it's lifted.
I think the issue, I mean, maybe my, I think my kids combined absences over the last 14 years has been five, but I think the issue is if one kid starts missing more than 10 days in an academic year, that's, you know, it's 180-day school year, so there is concern at the state level that if someone has chronic absenteeism, the only way to determine whether or not there's an issue at home versus there's actual, you know, real, is to have some documentation and a discussion. This just raises the discussion to say, after 10 days, there needs to be some input to make sure that this is not a problem at home versus an illness, right? I mean, it's a safety measure, it's to say that when kids are missing school, at least the school has a processing place to look and see why is a kid missing this much school. Doesn't mean you can't do it, but it's.
I don't know, the way it's written, I don't agree with that.
This is actually even more lax than it is now. Now it's day one first absence, you have, every absence you have to have a no rate. This is actually after 10, then it gets a little bit more strict, but I think the current policy is even more strict than this, technically, so it was kind of a way to give, like, of course, kids are going to get sick, have a cold. cold, stay home for the fever here and there, so then you're not going to go to the doctor every time. So I think that actually was attempting to take that into consideration of it.
Okay, so my question is, this is not language that we decided on. This is state legislative language and is associated with the new state, you know, this is not new, I guess, anymore, but the chronic absenteeism score that each school gets, these are some of the components within that. I don't know that it means you have to go see a medical professional, you know, if your kid has a fever and you call your PCP and they say, you know, "Yeah, keep him home." You know, I mean, I think that, again, like Steve said, it's to make sure in an environment where you don't necessarily know, you know, what's driving the absentee days, you know, make sure that, you know, we're looking into that and that we're getting feedback on why children are... Okay. All right, so that's 30-day review, so next month, we'll have a motion to approve those two policies.
Actually, technically, they actually have a 30-day...
Oh, well then, there you go. Okay. So there's... There you go. Then it's in. Okay. ACES, oh, that's me, sorry. I actually wasn't able to make...
So we have to move for...
Oh, we know, no. Because we forgot to... Oh, you practiced it on the motion.
Doesn't matter, it's on the agenda, so I move we adopt policies...
It's on the agenda, you can't, I just forgot to write the motion. Oh, yeah.
I move we adopt policies 5113, 5113.2, 5144.1 has been...
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. ACES, I did speak to the head of the ACES board. I can't make enough of the meetings, so I told him I continue to attend as many as I can, but I'm going to resign as a board member because otherwise it affects quorum, you know, for them. So I just, their Thursday's at noon, I just can't make all of them. So I will continue to attend to get information, I won't be able to vote, but I'll go to as many as I can for the next... Okay. CAVE, do you have...
One highlight, I have my handy-dandy notes. I have four, but maybe that's a good thing, though. This is the biggest...
What a shame.
I love the great boys.
CAVE asked me to make sure I say to you guys and not update everything, but the CAVE Day on the Hill is March 7th. If anyone's interested in that, I know if we want to qualify for our next level coming up next year for our award, we do need to make sure someone's attending, I believe that, or something similar, it doesn't have to be that. And what was the other one? The Alliance District Roundtable was rescheduled February 28th, if anyone's interested in that. And then just a call for the CAVE CAPS convention for next year. They're encouraging folks to submit proposals highlighting best practices in the district. Next year's theme is Connecticut's Future: Transforming Schools, Transforming Lives. And the strands are high-performing boards and superintendents, innovation, diversity and equity in excellence, and student growth and wellbeing. Something interesting, proposals to get that in by March 5th.
Upcoming meetings for March, we're looking to have the accountability report.
So we will have the accountability report for you. Again, just a reminder, this is related to, you might remember earlier in the fall, we brought to you the smarter balance information updated for another year going forward, but this is more than that. It's that plus the growth students are making, it's the physical education component, chronic absenteeism, achievement gap and all of that, so we're ready to present that in March.
And just for background, especially for new members, there's a very good explanation of the accountability, you know, what all is contained in that and what each component, you know, kind of the weight of those components. Marsha, I don't know if you can send that link out to us? I can look for it. I know we've seen it in the past, the accountability score, you know, kind of an explanation of what that is and how it's determined. If you could just send that to everybody at background who haven't been through the accountability presentation. Okay. And then we have new business, the primary...
So this is coming to you a little bit later this year than in past years because the grant monies were not released, surprise, surprise, until recently, but this has been a longstanding, important component and a tradition here at Beecher Road School. This particular grant has been written for a number of years. This is something that our school psychologists guide under the direction of the Special Services Director, and there are some teaching assistants who are also involved in the implementation of this. Actually, one of our positions, one of our teaching assistant positions is partially funded by this, as well as a number of activities. And again, it's the idea behind a safe and friendly school environment, the idea of early intervention, the importance of that, the importance of collaboration, not just within the building, but also within community services that take place outside of our walls when students may need that or families may need that. There's certainly an important aspect of addressing and supporting students who may be at risk through a very developmentally appropriate approach. And again, it's really part of our social-emotional process, really, when you come right down to it, and we talked a little bit about the social-emotional aspects of Responsive Classroom and our school climate earlier today, but this is certainly an important component that supports individual students where they are and what they need. So it's a small grant amount, $20,000, but it's an important one that continues to keep us moving forward in a lot of ways to do, offer things that many places don't.
Move that we approve the 2017-18 Primary Mental Health Grant for submission to the Connecticut State Department of Education.
Second. Okay. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. Let's see, I don't think there's any more public comment, but maybe. Oh, okay. Then I...
Move a German.
Okay. A second. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. We don't have...
Thank you, everyone.